I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Brooks.
Here.
Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mrs. Dean.
Mr. DeFrancesco.
Here.
Mr. Giraud.
Here.
Mr. Geiswhite.
Mr. Gulick.
Here.
Mr. Johnston.
Recommended approval of the meeting minutes as attached.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Our first presentation this evening will be the trap program at Penn Press which consists of three different teams. So I'll turn it over to the coach after I get the slideshow going on there. Alright, trap club recognition. Alright, Coach?
Well, I want to thank Dr. Glasspool for inviting us down here. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Dave Burchard. I'm one of the coaches of the Cambridge Springs High School team. My wife is also one of the coaches. The other coaches are Mark Mallard over there for Rachel Park, Maplewood High School, and Darren Ashbaugh for Sager Town High School here. To give me a little bit of background if you could go to the next slide, please. The program is an extracurricular trap shooting club for students in grades six through 12 in the Penn Press schools. The program is operating under the rules of the USA High School Play Target League which was set up in Minnesota. Our season runs nine weeks. The actual season, there's many more weeks of practice and competition and other events after that. It's a, I call it a virtual league. All of our shoots and our competitions are our host clubs. And our host clubs, each team has a host club, a sportsman's club. In the next five days of each one of those clubs, the head coach submits the scores to a pretty elaborate computer program that incorporates all the other scores from across the United States. Our program, we do adhere to all the Penn Press requirements for eligibility, discipline, academics, attendance, things like that. And wouldn't think nice about it. It's open to all neighboring schools and also some homeschool students that don't have a team at their homeschool. Tina, what's your name, Paul? She's one of our homeschool students that shoots for Cambridge Springs. We have students from Union City, a couple Catholic schools up in here that shoot for us and we incorporate all of them into there. And one thing I do want to stress, if you're not familiar with the program, always in there know of guns or ammunition or any meetings or practices on school property. Everything is held on the host play. To give you a little bit of history of it, it was born under a, the guy had a vision up in 2001 to how do we get more kids shooting and he decided to go to the schools and started there. In 2016, it was expanded to Pennsylvania. In 2016, there was only three school districts. If we flash forward to 2019, there are now 23 graduate schools and nearly 600 athletes in all of those schools. Nationally, we've got 1,000 schools registered and there's nearly 27,000 athletes. Statistics have shown it's the fastest growing and the safest sport in high school sports in the country, which is kind of a neat thing. And it's also approximately 19% over girls. So we're really trying to incorporate both genders there. Compiling some historical stats, since 2001, there's been more than 80,000 participants in the program. Over 45 million targets have been thrown and shot at and there hasn't been one single reported injury at any time. And we plan to keep that track record moving forward. As I said, it was started in Minnesota, so obviously they are a big proponent and they have a huge program in Minnesota. They have thousands of students. And if you look at their 2019 state championship, they had nearly 8,000 students, excuse me, 9,000 students at their state championship. No one facility can handle that many people, so they had to spread out over nine days. That's a big program there. And another interesting statistic for Minnesota is that it's the largest varsity sport in Minnesota, more than hockey, which is kind of neat. The Penn Press teams joined the Pennsylvania High School Play Target League in 2017. Each of the three attendance areas have a team. I think the next slide starts with Sager Town, so if you want to stretch your Sager Town a little bit?
We started out three years ago. We had roughly 27, 26, 27. This year, we're 38 athletes, students. I think we have roughly a dozen seniors we're losing this year. So the interest is showing. Phone calls and younger kids, I mean like these Dave said, sixth grade through 12. And that does require a hunter safety or an online safety program. So we're very, very cautious about safety. That's a big thing. The help, Pelican here helps. Got a few parents that step up. It's a good program. The families, it's a sport you can do your whole life, if you're big, small, male, female, handicap. So it opens doors for a lot of, a lot of the kids. We see some that take right off and do great, some have to work at it. And it really, it's rewarding to see those kids excel in that manner. So, you know, I'd like to thank Dave. Dave's a big part of why this is going here. So, other than that, we're having a great time. The kids love it, the parents love it. So I'd like to see it grow, I guess. And if anybody wants to come to Sportsman's Club, you're more than welcome to check it out for an event. We have a fall league starting, a couple weeks I do believe. So look us up and come and see what it's all about. Thank you.
Coach, could you introduce your athletes that are here? Could you introduce the athletes that are here and if they want to say anything, you know, about why they like it or how they did or anything?
I was actually, I just graduated, so I can't obviously stay in the league. But I was in the league for two years. And this year, I won third place for novice male with 87 plays for the Sportsman's Club.
I believe so.
Something like that. 86, 87, somewhere in there. So it's extremely competitive. Obviously, 87 out of 100 plays, that's a pretty good number. But it's very competitive and a lot of practice. And the first thing we talk about is safety. I remember from day one, safety is always the first, always.
Thanks, Dave.
Carter Stewart?
This was my first year. It was really fun to have all the experience with the team and go to the state shoot and see what it's like.
Thank you.
I think it's important to note for Sager Town that Ms. Haley Rule placed high overall average for her team, 23.5 out of 25. Your team took third stage beat us.
And that's another thing too, Maplewood, Sager Town, different teams, we're all buddies. You know, it's, we get together and have, we have a lot of fun. In this Sager Town, I'd like to, this kind of came loose a little bit. This was our first year.
Wow.
So we've placed, each year we've placed and done pretty well.
And I do have, out of the, I'd like to have a question on these plaques here, if there's a way, and for every school, if we could get these into the school someplace?
Absolutely.
If we could show them off a little bit, put them somewhere, I'd be, I'd like that.
Is the fall schedule going to be online or somewhere that we can see if we want to come to check it out?
Yeah, I'll send it.
Send it to me, I'll forward it around.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, forward it or someone on the website.
Yeah, we had a, we had a large tournament back in June that we hosted at the Gabriel Club for Cambridge. We had 100 athletes there from 14 different schools in the area. I believe Mr. Brooks came in that. And it was a fun event, yeah. So I'll be glad to share.
Thank you.
Sure.
I wanted to make a comment because I really appreciate what you're doing. Because besides having fun, you know, I think it's, what you're doing is very important because you're teaching our youngsters teamwork, discipline, respect for each other, and a weapon they use, and of course, safety. And I think it's a worldwide program that our kids have to be in very much.
Thank you. I believe it's strong. I've been coaching youth shooting sports for 22 years. I believe in it. And I think this high school program is better than anything I've ever thought, 4H or anything else. I hate to use the word at-risk students, but it's for, a lot of our shooters that shine, maybe not be the champions, but they're developing self-confidence, self-discipline. They feel better about themselves.
Yep.
And it's just a good overall program. Maybe they can't play trumpet or shoot three-point shots or score a touchdown or sing the chorus, but by gosh, this is their sport.
And it's fun.
Appreciate that. Mark, you're on deck. You want to run through your stuff?
Okay, my stuff.
Okay. Mark is the head coach from Maplewood. Their home club is the Black Ash Sportsman's Club over Guys Mills off of 27 there. Next slide, please. You had about 35 athletes this year. They were the conference division championships. The spring league, we mentioned, they were also the traveling league champions, since you only had one loss. All these teams had students that qualified and went to the state championship, which is held over southeast of Williamsport there. At the state championship, their team are in fifth place. Five of the Maplewood Tigers qualified, which they had to qualify based on their score. And they traveled to Mason, Michigan, as did, how many did you say?
Michigan this year was nine.
Nine. So we had five Maplewood students go up to compete in the national event. They did outstanding up there. The team finished 35th out of the nation up there. Cameron, you placed 88th in the nation, which is really good. Did you shoot 100 straight up here?
Seven.
He shot 100 straight one day, too. That's 100 targets in a row consecutive. Congratulations. That's really good. You can see some hardware is running around his neck, too. Alright, I'll go on finally to Blue Devils there.
Do you want to introduce your athletes?
Oh, I'm sorry. Since we're talking, what, you know, what you liked about it?
Thank you.
I just enjoy shooting all the time. And I like to shoot because it's normally a team sport. It's kind of like an individual sport, I guess. Because you're normally shooting for your team, you're shooting for yourself. It's more of a competitive outlook, I think. Safety is always important for every coach. No matter what, like every shoot we go to, it always start with everybody look out for any safety issues, if anything's wrong, point it out, the coach take care of it. So I think it's overall really good.
And you're going to be a senior?
I will be a senior.
So we've got to put up with you for one more year.
I'm Sean Gulick. I've been shooting for three years now. I just really enjoy it because, I don't know, I'm good at it, I guess. I have a lot of fun, travel around, see new people and see new things, so.
Thank you. Is that all Maplewood? Alright, the host club for the Cambridge team is Lake Edgelo Sportsman's Club near Crossingville there. We had 20 students this year. That included, as I said, one from Union City. We had a couple Catholic Prokill students and one homeschool student. We placed fourth in the conference. We had 15 students that qualified for the state championship. Of those, we've got Ian Anderson, stand up, and Tina Forty-Eight. Ian plays first in the junior varsity division. And Tina plays third in the junior varsity division. They're both first-year shooters and they've really been coming on strong here. We had five students that qualified and competed at the national championship. Of that, we had several personal bests throughout the season, but one of our students couldn't be here. He's going to be here.
Yes.
Okay. He's going to be here two weeks, but he completed his first 50 straight targets, which is a big accomplishment for that. Let's see, Nathan, stand up, you're on deck. You get to say something. It's Nathan Webb.
I'm Nathan. I'm one of the five for Cambridge who went to the Nationals. And I think throughout everything, like shooting, all it all brought, like everybody put us all on squads. Everybody on your squad, we all worked together. Like, if you were having a bad day, everybody tried to help you do better. And then we all worked together and went on from there.
Ian, want to say anything?
Well, everybody on your team, your family, every Sunday, you get to go talk to them. Whether you're shooting with them or you're loading a house, you're all working and working. You don't even have to talk to each other, know each other. And you can ask anyone to do something without a doubt, but it'll be awesome.
Me?
I go to build a law with me, though. And my cousin's coming, walking with us. And the only person doing it is I don't want to run. So it's more than a do, it's more than a run. I enjoy it, though. I did, I joined in a possible league that I did this year just to get the practices in. And I played soccer, which I was very proud of. I'm definitely excited that they got me hooked, my experience, yeah.
Our team also had a float in Cambridge Springs High School, or Cambridge Springs Volunteer Fireman's Break, which is kind of neat. And then there's a photo of the team of misfits, as I call them, no disrespect, that went to the national championships there. I didn't mention, but we also give out varsity patches. We have requirements that they must meet and criteria. Maplewood issue, who got your varsity letter? And Nathan received a varsity letter from Cambridge Springs this year, so there's a picture of the varsity letter that we awarded them. And then finally, just to give you an idea what the national championship was like. There were 1,691 registered competitors in the individual category. There were 217 teams from 38 different states. And there were over 6,000 spectators. It's a big deal. And they do this all over three days, so it's got to be pretty well choreographed. And there's some really stiff competition. If you think about it, there were seven athletes that shot 100 straight in the individual event. And the top 21 competitors all shot 99 or better. So you could still shoot a 99, you might have come in 21st. So some really stiff competition. But it's not all about winning. You know, as Tina and Ian kind of allude to, it's getting to know your sport, to enjoy it, to support each other, to promote the safety, and to develop all the skills you can take with you the rest of your life. So I know it was prior to you being on your watch, but I really thank the board and the Penn Press for allowing us to do this. And I see the program growing. Other schools have contacted us, like, hey, how did you do this? So that's what I'm happy. Since we started three years ago, others have added Cag, Northwestern, Corey, Fort LeBeuf, General McLean, all places. So we're very happy about it. I really appreciate the support there. And I encourage any of you who want to come out anytime for a practice or an event or a tournament or anything like that. We'd love to have you up there. Want to add anything? Are there any questions?
Sportsman's Club is out on Russell 27?
The Black Ash Club is, yes. That's where Maplewood shoots. Sager Town of course shoots. It's Sager Town Club on Block 11.
If I'd like to add a little bit, my name's Doug Jordan. We kind of jumped into this, excuse me, with both feet this year, my grandson spoke shoot. I went to a training course to be able to help coach. And one of the things that I want to kind of back up Tina's comments on, we have some math, everybody shoots in the team's math. But we also have the traditional activities, the kids that wrestle, play ball. But we also have an appeal to a group of students that aren't your traditional athletes. And we expose them to the team competition, the concentration, the coaching, and stuff that, they really doesn't, don't seem to have any other avenue to get to. And I think the fact that it's different than the other sports. Tina's point, we don't run very much. Okay, so maybe a little. But the other side of that is, you know, it doesn't mean that they're more or less an athlete. Competition in this, you know, to watch a kid drop a bird and then settle in and get it right. They feel the same accomplishment. They learn to work with other people. One of the things that I've taken away, because I'm fairly fresh to this sport as well, is the manners. You know, the way we progress through the system from station to station, the manners, the language that has to be used, you know, if you know anything about trap, and I had to do a lot of research on it because it was new to me, this is a very, very old sport. At one time, it was referred to as the sport of kings. I think a better term is the sport of gentle people, gentlemen, gentle ladies. You know, people go out there real manly and just the organization of it, I think is something that a lot of the students wouldn't get a chance to participate in in any other sport that I've been involved in. I've, you know, I raised kids and grandkids. I've been about through the gauntlet. This is just a little different. And I think it's really encouraging as to what they take away from this.
Very well put.
Thank you.
I just want to say, thank you guys for inviting me when I got to go out there. It was great to be out there. It was such a family atmosphere. Food was involved.
Good, Mark.
That's, you know how it appeals to certain board members. That was a good way. So thanks for inviting me out there. Is there any talk about making this a PIA double A sport? Like in, you said varsity sport in Minnesota, I don't know if that was?
It is up there. You have a better idea than me is, the only PIA double A shooting sport is smaller rifle, indoor smaller rifle right now. I don't know.
And then, I just want to say, like, it's, when I went there and from the way you guys are here today, you guys are really so respectful and grateful for what's going on. I'm not going to put anybody on the spot, but if there's anything down the line, if the board can get out of your way to do something, or if there's something that you need from the board, feel free to reach out to Dr. Glasspool and let us know. And promote it, like make sure that you're calling your scores into the building in the mornings, like put them on the announcements, you know, stuff like that. Just build it up.
Come back next year, you know, maybe right after Nationals?
Absolutely.
When, when they're Nationals?
Nationals in July.
Come back in August.
Yeah, it'll be in August.
We'll start the year off with trap.
And if anyone wants to come out, we'd really love to have you up there. Everybody has to start somewhere, believe me.
Can we participate?
Absolutely, that's what I mean. We'd love to have you. We'll run you through the safety program and figure it out there. I can't tell you how exciting it is for someone to break their first target. They turn around with this big smile on their face like nothing you've ever seen. Or they run their first 25. Do you wear your hat? It's a tradition that when you break your first 25, all your friends and competitors line up and we wrap your hat and throw it up in the air and everybody shoots your hat. It's a badge of honor. It's exciting. So thank you once again.
Thank you. We appreciate you guys taking time. And we're going to continue with our meeting, but if you want, it's, there's only a couple more days of summer. We'll stop and you guys can head out or stay, your call. But again, you only got a week and two days of summer left, right?
We won't be a...
Nobody said.
So if y'all run, it's okay.
Hey, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I need it for the board. Nobody can leave.
Hey, thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
You want, you want to leave those here and I'll take them, put them in my office, and then I'll take them up to the high school?
Great.
Alright, yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you. Alright, Sager Town High School Boys Volleyball, we were going to recognize them. However, some of them are in college now, some of them are out in field, you know, with other athletic seasons continuing. But all of our volleyball teams did good this past winter, but the Sager Town boys made it to the state championship tournament. So congratulations to Coach Johnson, who's also coaching right now, girls volleyball, so he's busy as well. So congratulations to all those kids. Public comments, any PAA representatives tonight? No registered citizens' comments. Athletic committee, Mr. Gulick is the chairman. Going to accept the resignation of Rodney Miller from his duties as assistant girls basketball coach at Cambridge Springs effective July 11, 2019.
On behalf of the committee, I make a motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item B, recommend approval to employ the following coaches as listed.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Recommend approval of following athletic trips as listed.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Education committee, Mr. Brooks, chairman. Item A, recommend approval of the Rural Regional College of Northern PA 2019-2020 Satellite Delivery Site Agreement as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Recommend approval of the Reed 180 Universal Subscription Package for one year as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item C, recommend approval of the Service Purchase Contract with Community Alternatives Incorporated for Behavioral Specialist Services for the 19-20 school year as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Recommend approval to waive policy 239 and admit a foreign exchange student at Maplewood High School for the 2019-20 school year.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just for the public, you know, do you want to give a short explanation?
Short synopsis is, policy 239 says that any foreign exchange student should have their intent to attend one of our schools by June 30. We received this application from a young lady from Spain, maybe late last week. The family showed up at the work session on Monday and said that she was contacted very late in the summer for placement. So the board discussed this on Monday about committing this student to attend, so that's why we have to waive our policy, which says the deadline is June 30.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item E is recommend approval Crawford County SAP Agreement for Mental Health Liaison Services for the 2019-2020 school year as attached. This was not discussed at the Monday meeting, but came in since. It's kind of a boilerplate contract that we're required by law to have anyway, so I just wanted to clarify before you vote.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Facilities and Transportation Committee, Mr. Johnston.
Facilities and Transportation Committee, Mr. Johnson, chairman. Item A, recommend approval of a three-year contract with National Fuel Resources as attached.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item B, recommend approval of one-year extension of the contract with Reed Oil Twenty First Century Energy Group for gasoline as attached.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item C, recommend approval of one-year extension of the contract with Metzler Fuel Service for Diesel Fuel as attached.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Recommend approval of change order for the Sagertown Roofing Project as listed. This is the patch over the gymnasium and auditorium at the Sagertown High School.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item E, recommend approval of the contracted bus and van drivers as attached.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item F, recommend approval of the extended school year transportation costs as listed.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Any discussion?
I'll slow it down.
No, he needs to speed up.
I thought Bob was the second.
It's your turn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
Item G, recommend approval of a parent-provided transportation agreement for student A.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Finance Committee, Mr. Brown, chairman. Item A, recommend approval of the treasurer's report as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
I guess I'm missing a matter of study to ask any questions. I could probably help you out if there's a question, Luigi.
No problem.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item B, recommend approval of the disbursements as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item C, recommend approval of the PDE thirty eighty-six Agreement to Sell or Purchase Meals with Family and Community Christian Association for the pre-k classrooms in our elementary schools for the nineteen twenty school year as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item E. Item D, recommend approval of the breakfast, lunch, and a la carte prices for the nineteen twenty school year as attached.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item E, recommend approval of a tuition student to attend Sagertown High School for the nineteen twenty school year.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Personnel Committee, Mrs. Dean, chairperson. Going to ask for consent agenda to approve resignations, leaves of absence, instructional recalls, instructional hires, replacement substitutes, non-instructional hires, non-instructional reassignments, granting tenure, and board approved volunteers, item A through I.
On behalf of the committee, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Policy Committee, Mr. De Francesco, chairman. Uh, item A is a non-action item. It is the first reading of two policies, uh, two-ten, use of medication, policy eight twenty-four, maintaining professional adult student boundaries. Uh, school safety, Mr. Backus, chairman. There are no voting items. Crawford County Career and Technology Center report, Mr. Johnson's our representative. There's no report this evening.
There wasn't.
There wasn't, you're right. Uh, no meeting in July. Intermediate Unit Five report, Mr. Brooks is our representative. There is no intermediate unit meeting in July, no report. PSBA Legislative Report, Mr. Gulick is our representative. There is no report this evening. Which brings us to new business, is there any new business?
Well... We had a request from, uh, Mr. Gingrich to... For, uh, an approval for LERTA program for an investment it wants to achieve in Sagertown. Mr. Gingrich is willing to spend a million, one million eight hundred thousand dollars to improve a rundown facility right now, you know. A facility which assessment is only ninety-four thousand dollars, and they pay at this time only four thousand, I believe it's, uh, four thousand hundred thirty dollars a year, which, which is even more than I pay and a few others pay. I believe the, uh, the board should take up this LERTA program soon as possible because it's important for any investors that, that willing to spend all this, kind of, all this money to get a low rate of interest. At that, I don't, nobody knows where the interest rate's gonna go. So, the sooner the board will, will make a decision, I think, the better, even if we have to call a special meeting, Mr. President. I think it's worth, worth to act as soon as possible because, you know, I'm familiar with that old pickle factory. And believe me, it needs a lot of improvement. I'm surprised that, uh, that somebody actually is using it, you know. I used to go there for line dancing, believe me. And we used to climb these stairs, uh, by the time you get up there, you know, you lost all, all, all the will to, to any dancing. But, it, it needs improvement, and I think this will be the best investment the, uh, district can make as soon as possible, and give this individual a chance to get a, a good rate on the interest rate. Because I'm sure he doesn't have a million dollars in his pocket to do the work.
I would, I would suggest we have Dr. Glasspool get back at that, because he sent us some stuff, but it was like Mr. Brown said. It's kind of vague and...
I was thinking that I could get, I could talk to him about getting a resolution drawn up, um, that looks more like something that I, at least I'm familiar with, or that I've seen. I could even ask, uh, you know, Ted, when he gets, uh, when he's available to reach out. Um, I have his contact information and, um, you know, maybe provide some assistance.
Well, I'd like to add for the, for the people on TV land. The LERTA program is not a free exemption to, from paying taxes. It's only a, uh, we allow additional assessment of, of improvement to carry out the, the new taxes in increments for ten years. Up to ten years, I believe, correct, Mr. Rodriguez?
It, it, it can vary in a number of years that, uh, but it's based upon the resolution that is sought by, you know, Mr. Gingrich in this particular case, and the other taxing bodies that he's gonna approach as well would have to approve something. So, all of the taxing bodies would ultimately have to agree, uh, with respect to the term.
But, it's not an exemption. We're not giving anybody any leeway not to pay taxes. They're still gonna have to pay the tax they pay now. And once the improvements are completed, then a new assessment comes in and a new improvement will be taxed accordingly.
Help me out here, is what he just said correct? I mean, aren't we giving some tax forgiveness?
And we'll...
In a sense?
There can be, I mean, it depends upon, um, I mean, the, the intention that Mr. Gingrich would likely have would be to obtain some, uh, you know, some assistance in that fashion. And, uh, you know, oftentimes, there's a base amount that, that is taxed right now. The purpose of the LERTA is in order to induce somebody to invest money in the project so that they create something that's worth more money there. Um, and that, the, the increase in value, um, depending upon what you agree to, may not be taxed for a period of years, sometimes that's seven years I've seen, uh, in other LERTA cases. But it depends upon, um, you know, what's being sought. Um, I mean, you know, there's no specific amount that it has to be. So, he would, he would propose to you what his plan is in, in some detail, um, so that you could determine what the, you know, potential tax impact is.
That's why we needed a resolution.
That's what I meant. But isn't it very, isn't it very likely that he will, in some sense, get tax forgiveness? Otherwise, why would he even ask for it?
He would get some tax forgiveness for the period of years that you, if you approve something along those lines. So, if you went from an assessment of, uh, you know, I think it's currently assessed at ninety thousand, or whatever happens to be, and it goes to an assessment of two hundred thousand, the difference there may be, you know, non-taxable if you agree to do that. Um, and, and I've seen, like, the school district may agree to a certain percentage of that being non-taxable that might be different from the local municipality in, in the manner in which they approve it. But, um, you know, and anything that you would approve would also, would likely be contingent upon them getting approval from other entities as well. But you have to have the details to work from in order to figure out what those numbers are.
We have the ability to do what we want.
But he has to, he has to ask us for something first, and he hasn't really...
We're not giving him...
I'm gonna reach out. I think, let me, let me reach out.
And to Luigi's, we can have a special meeting, I mean, it's, it's not a big deal.
We just have to make a public...
Sure.
Yeah, we just have to advertise, and we can have a special meeting to vote, because I get what you're saying, I mean, sooner the better. The ball's really gonna be in his court.
Am I to understand that all three political, um, governments have to approve the same thing?
They don't have to approve the same thing. I mean, uh, they're asking independently, but, but at least from the ones that I've been involved in the past, there, there usually is, uh, there's some working together with respect to this, because, I mean, one taxing body doesn't usually wanna give a free ride to something, and then the other taxing bodies are collecting tax on it. So, um, so it, it tends to be some, some effort and concern there in order to, to get to the end product. Plus, if you're Mr. Gingrich's, you know, shoes, um, you're gonna wanna be able to do the math to see how much you can save over time so that he can determine what he's gonna invest.
Great, this thing to go to get him over here and get him somebody...
I'll reach out. Next one. All right? Any other new business? Board member remarks?
We'll start with Luigi, any board member remarks?
I went up to the, uh... Some of you are not gonna like this. Well, I'd like to bring it to the attention of people in our district that months ago, I submitted to the board a proposal for discussion only about getting reimbursed for legal fees. That was done in an executive session. And then now I find out that despite the fact that I did, it was not even an executive session, it, it's out in the public. Why we had board directors discussing an executive session, matter, personnel matter, most likely, in public, I have no idea. But since the matter is now is in public, I'll be honest with you, my dear district resident, that I will formally submit a request for reimbursement for the legal fees that I incurred in the process of doing my duties as a board director. The other thing that I'd like to bring to the attention to, to the public is esports. Esports unlikely, unlikely the trap team has no educational value. You got, you got kids that enlist in, in teams to compete against other, other teams sitting down behind a computer and mentally, that we understand, it's, each individual is a team together with that individual that form another team. I don't know how that thing's gonna work. But the, the fact is, there is no value, no educational value, unlikely the trap team. They use, they, the, the competition is on video games that they are violent and they have to kill somebody, either an animated object or, uh, an, or a person, a figure of a person. And I, and these are the same videos that United States Army and the United States Marines uses to train soldiers, our soldiers. And our soldiers are trained to kill. When I was in the army, that's what they trained me for, to kill. Luckily for me, I never killed anybody. So, you know, I really think that anybody there, out there, that please check out what esports is all about. And let us know what you think, because I definitely do not agree that the district should put its name on any events that may occur in the future. If, actually, I don't think the district should even engage to be part of this, uh, esports events that somebody came up with. That's it.
Probably gonna say something I shouldn't. For a gentleman that claims to be all for the taxpayers, you're now asking the taxpayers to pay you back tens of thousands of dollars for a lawsuit that you initiated. That doesn't seem to make sense to me.
I think this guy's just...
But anyway, I was talking, I was talking to the...
So did I.
Um, anyway, Trap Team, thank you very much for coming out, it was very enlightening. Uh, I look forward to seeing the fall schedule. I wanna come to, um, at least one of the matches, maybe more. Uh, I would love that. It makes me sad that they didn't have that when I was in school, because I'm an avid sportsman, and, you know, I love shooting sports and all that, and they didn't have that back in the dinosaur days when I was coming to school, but I wish I would have. Um, I would like to congratulate the, I think there was five or six, five teachers that were granted tenure. Kinda went through it kinda quick and, and lumped it all together, but, uh, that's a big step in a, in a teacher's career, and I just wanna make sure that I congratulate them for getting tenure. And, um, I know the custodians and the teachers have been working very hard to get ready, uh, it's sneaking right up on us. I wanna wish all of them, uh, good luck and have a great year, and also to all the students of all three attendants areas. That's all I have, thank you.
Congratulations to all the kids that are out to participate in the fall sports. We've got tremendous amount of athletes out there. Football, golf, soccer, girls volleyball. I'm reading some of them. Trap. Cross-country, that's the one I was, I knew cross-country was the one, no offense to trap. But I know that our athletes are out there, um, in the, the sun and the rain. Um, I hope they all stay, uh, healthy. I know one of our teams, one of the kids hurt himself first day on tackling dummy, on non-contact football. Hopefully that is the end of the unfortunate accidents, and we want our kids going out there and having, uh, the greatest season that they can have. Great job to, to the entire staff as far as the, the roofs go. I know that we were in kind of a, a bind at the beginning of the year, or the end of the school year, getting this roof done and the timing of it, and just congratulations, a great job to everyone that, that got that roof done, and figuring out a way to fix the, the high school roof as well. I know the, uh, custodians and the staff did a great job all summer. We had our, our, um, our fire sale auction up there that, uh, I know that took a lot of time from our custodians, and the ground still looked great, and people are still working hard. Congratulations to them and all the teachers that are working all year. The Trap Team, thank you guys for coming in again. You guys made me feel welcome when I was out there. It's really great to see, I think the, I think it might have been Ian that said that you guys acted like family, and, and that's what it felt like out there, you're telling stories about each other, and, you know, this guy did that, and, oh, she's really taken on and she wants a gun, just like your coach, and it was really great to be a part of that, you know, and that's really one of the values of all these clubs. You know, it, you know, trap shooting is not for everybody, you know, like, like any other club. It's great that you guys put the time and the effort in, and, you know, you're building teamwork, and you're building camaraderie, you're getting these guys out doing something together. You know, and like you said, whether it's the athletes together with the kid, the homeschooled kids, it's everyone together with positive role models, um, conscious of their grade...
their grades, and really, it's really impressive, so thank you very much for that. Um, something that we've got coming up is our, I don't think it was brought here, about the Pennsylvania Cy, Pencrest Cyber Academy, which is significantly better than any of the Pennsylvania cyber type things. Um, look into that. That's really a way that, uh, we're starting our own cyber school up, and it's really a way that taxpayers and students and families can have a say on how much spending the district does. Um, the state's not gonna come to our aid and, and make us pay less for cybers, but this is a product that we can control here, give you a better product, give you a cyber education, and it can save, it can save a million dollars or more at Pencrest if parents decide to take advantage of this cyber academy versus any of the other ones. We have an open house next week, um, so look on the website, and if you have any questions, about to reach out to the board. Um...
Start off by, uh, I wanna thank Brayden. What was it? Kance? Yeah, Brayden Kance was here Monday and gave us a, uh, talk on esports, and Luigi kinda touched on it, but with help of the Trap Team, and Dave, you said something tonight to kinda struck a, a good string with me, but, uh, I think it goes with all clubs, whether it's trap shooting, or, or cross-country, or even an esports team. If you have a group of people together, I, I think you do become a community, and you do become part of something, and I still firmly believe, as I look into it more, that esports is something, it's a wave of the future. I think we have to not be backwards, and I think we have to start looking forward to what our students are wanting. We say we're for the students, and we have to show that we are for them. May not agree with that fully, but it's out there, it's, it's there, there's nothing we're gonna do to get rid of it. The Trap Teams, uh, you guys did awesome, thank you so much for coming in, it was awesome to see you. Uh, you mentioned cross-country, just remember, safety for our runners, you see them running on the roads early in the morning, you see them in the evening, it's gonna start getting darker sooner, uh, just beware of the kids outrunning, uh, seeing a lot more of that. And, uh, I guess the last thing is the tragedy in, in Maplewood for the Whitman family, uh, our heartfelt prayers and sympathies go out to them, uh, such a tragic, just, just tragedy at its worst in a small community as Maplewood and Pencrest. It's very tough to hear things like that, so, um, I'm sure I can speak for everybody when I say our prayers and thoughts go out to the Whitman family. That's it.
Next thing. A couple things, I just wanna, we, we hired a couple science teachers tonight, we congratulate them. Uh, wanna remind parents that open houses are twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth at all, all the attendance areas, uh, you're encouraged to attend. Um, thank you to the Trap Team, I hope to get to one of your practices or events. Um, I really don't have a whole lot, everybody kinda said everything. Good luck to all the, the students as they head back, fall sports, good luck to the teachers. Good luck to the teachers, uh, and that's really all I have.
Thank you. Executive Session at one announcement, or met executive session on August 12th and August 15th to discuss personnel and negotiations.
Much to your...
Much to your. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're right.